The microphone appears for the purposes of the people in the room to be able to hear us. If you're speaking at the podium, this microphone will pick up everything in the room, so we'll be able to hear you down there. And we apologize for the situation, as mother nature ever works. So with that, Council and Lotbacher, will you lead us in the invocation of the pledge, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pleasure of the meetings. I pledge allegiance to the law, to the states, to the citizens of the country, and to the citizens of the city. And to the republic of America, and to the free and fair life that is in our day.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I'd like to move item number three, the motion of Bill McCann, to become item number two.
A second. Is there any discussion or objection, Steve?
We want this to be prior to public comments.
Yes, yes, so right, it's right, I'm sorry, it is moving in above public comments. So with that, is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that message unanimously, thank you. Chief.
Good morning.
I can go ahead.
Good evening. I'm going to need my time as well. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is with great honor. I love when we are swearing additional officers to this great staff here that provide great services to the city. Standing before you is Ramon Camara. Joined us from Emory University Police Department, which worked as a police officer since August of 2021. Prior to her career in law enforcement, she was employed as a building and residential service supervisor for Emory University, worked as an operations manager for MedStar Washington Hospital Center. She has held additional positions in healthcare, hospitality, and the food service industries. Ramon holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Georgia State University. She has actually been with us since June 17th, and I would like to welcome her to the department.
All right, welcome to Dunwoody. Thanks, I'm on the other side. You didn't tell me that earlier. You didn't tell me that earlier. Raise your right hand, please, yes. That's what I'm missing from, sorry. Can you safety hand me? Thank you, Chief. Okay, knew I was missing something. On my honor, I
On my honor, I Ramon Camara
Do solemnly swear and affirm that
Do solemnly swear and affirm that
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America
The Constitution of the State of Georgia
The Constitution of the State of Georgia
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for
Public money due to this state
Public money due to this state
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof
I am not the holder of any office of trust
I am not the holder of any office of trust
Under the Government of the United States
Under the Government of the United States
Any other state or any foreign state which I am
Any other state or any foreign state which I am
By the laws of the State of Georgia
By the laws of the State of Georgia
Prohibited from holding
Prohibited from holding
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer
According to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia
According to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia
I will faithfully follow the legal rules
I will faithfully follow the legal rules
Regulations, policies, and procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department
Regular regulations, policies, and procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department
And the City of Dunwoody, Georgia
And the City of Dunwoody, Georgia
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stand with your family here. Congratulations, okay, I get to say something, and I have a microphone, so. We are so grateful that you've chosen Dunwoody to be your public safety home. This is your community, you have a big crowd tonight. Maybe the biggest one we've had in a long time. And we are incredibly pleased and happy that you're here, and we, your city council, and myself are here to support you and your fellow colleagues, your fellow officers. You let us know if there's anything we can do. We're here to make your job in life as easy as possible. And we're so grateful that you have picked us. And we have the greatest community in the whole state, and probably the whole country, really. But I think you landed in a really good place to be a police officer, in my opinion. So, thank you very much. Welcome to Dunwoody, let's give her another rack of the coffee. Go down. Going back in. All right. We know, we know. I'd like to call Mr. Bill McCann. And you, if that's okay, if you'd like to stand, you'd rather sit, that's fine.
We'll try for a while.
Okay. Okay, hold on. Oh yeah, that's the way.
First of all, thank you all for coming. We wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Bill and thank him for his years of service. And Bill, firstly, I can't thank you enough for all that you've done for me. Bill and I served on the zoning Board of Appeals together, we sat next to each other. We had, we had a good time. And Louise, his wife, was one of the first people I met when we moved to Dunwoody in 2004. And I know that Bill and Louise have given so, so, so much to his community, and I'm so proud to call you guys friends. Bill and I attend church together, we generally solve the world's problems before we get into service. And I do remember one Sunday when you, Greg and I, stood outside the front talking, and I think we made it into about half the service, but I'm pretty sure we probably solved a lot of problems. I just don't remember what they were. Thanks is not enough recognition for all that you've given the city, but from the very bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for the city, and for me personally, you are truly a gentleman, and Dunwoody is a better place for having you in.
So while I often speak off the cuff, I was afraid I would forget important things, so I wrote some things down. So while we could stand here and reflect on all your successes and businesses, and your long career at IBM, or the work you did for the 1996 Olympics. Instead, I want to honor the time you spent making Dunwoody a better place. Many years ago, you supported your wife Louise when she was the president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. 1989, right, it takes, these kind, those kind of roles take a supportive partner at home, and you fill those shoes great. From your involvement in Citizens for Dunwoody, Dunwoody Preservation Trust, the Brook Run Conservancy, to serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals for many years, and the Development Authority from its inception, you have played a key role in the city we are today. Bill, you are keenly intelligent, insightful, and thorough in your analysis. The care you took as you made decisions on the city's behalf was a model for your fellow board members. Your sharp wit, critical thinking, ability, and I hear you're really funny, ability to get to the point, and your generous spirit has made a lasting impression on so many. Your kindness, willingness to share your knowledge and experience, and open-mindedness has made you an ideal mentor to those you served with and beyond. We are so incredibly fortunate, you have chosen to use your time and talents for the betterment of your community. In my opinion, your retirement is a model for us all. And I imagine you never really felt retired. You know, you're tired. Your civic leadership has made a real difference for Dunwoody. I, and our council, and our community are so incredibly grateful for your service, and we're so pleased that you're letting us honor you tonight. And with that, I have a little certificate to present to you. And then a council will join us for a photo. This is for you, and a certificate of appreciation for Bill McCann for his longstanding and continued commitment to the welfare and betterment of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia. Yeah, comes in a little bit more, wait a minute. How's it? All right, that is perfect, ready? One, two, three. Okay, John, go anywhere, I'm sorry. I didn't talk about this. So if you've served on a board with, for the city, with Bill, if you'll come join us for a picture. And then also, we'll scoot up forward, and although I'm on mic, I think you're in your time. Betty, y'all come on, because you've certainly served for you. When you, they all just scoot up, and there's your desk, so you're, right. Ready, everybody look here, one, two, three. And, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I got a memorabilia today. Bill's gonna speak, okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Mayor and Council, the thoughtfulness of this recognition. Thank you for so many friends being here, that's what kicked me out of the, your friendship, your fact you came since the beginning, Monday evening. I was told this is a very exciting agenda, I got me, so. I'm saying about this a little bit today, and yesterday, and the day before. I was called a few weeks ago by Stacy, and she said, you have a choice, I said, what's that? She said, you could be at a council meeting on 8th of this, 22nd July. I said, why, why are you at a council meeting on 8th? I said, I'm here to be here. Well, I, you called and talked to President Jackson years ago, and Jackson said, look, he talked to Stacy, cut yourself, just go ahead and do it somewhere. So, I'm here tonight, feel like to be here, thank you for the recognition. Also wanted to do a shout out though to John Hennigan, John has been one of the, one of the council, ever since its inception, has done an exceptional job in District 6, town.
630 BS.
No, 6. But everybody's done an exceptional job, and he's been here all these years, it's last agreed there. I also wanted to recommend to them, if they haven't done any calls, if you want to know about Dunwoody. There are two books, the story of Dunwoody by, let's see, Elizabeth. Ethel's rule, and Elizabeth, whatever. They published this book, 1821 to 1975. And it tells you a whole lot about Dunwoody, and then Joyce Almop, one of our saints, who's home. And then Bird, just heard, and Patrick also. They wrote a book, Dunwoody, 1975, that you have to want, it's, it was a great two books to tell you about what Dunwoody was, because Dunwoody was more, they're just, you know, territory within the county. Through the kind of city, long before we could say, people, it's, and Robert, he just reappointed him to Dunwoody. And it's worth reading just to understand what it has had transpired since 1821. This was dynamic, this was, we had churches, we had schools, we had organizations. We had, the best story of the tornado recovering from that. We had things like, about eight days, they started a small thing, thanks to Danny Ross and others, and now a major content in the city of Dunwoody. So it's exciting to listen to what is going on in this area. Sometime we don't stop on, I'll think about that, I'd be proud of it. But we've been maybe here for now, what, two and a half years, grandchildren, great, the grandchildren, Matthew, Kay, our daughter-in-law, Becky. It's been a great place to be, but first, as a territory or wherever you were, unincorporated here in Agnes. And now, it's been a great place to raise a family, to age, participate in community activities. Although I had the opportunity to be involved in a lot of things, and so has we. A whole lot of things over the years, we've gotten out of the joy of being part of this great community. And I thank you for being here tonight, thank you community, thank you council, the mayor. Very thoughtful, much appreciated. Hope you all have a great summer. Great trip home, enjoy the rest of the meeting, I'll be able to stay myself there.
So while we do So, so while we do have an exciting agenda, if you were here just for Mr. McCann and are leaving, don't worry, I'm gonna give the room a minute to clear out until we go to our next item on the agenda. And you're welcome to stay.
Thanks all, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I wasn't saying you had to leave. Just to make it clear. But if you are leaving, now would be an okay time. As everyone, as people are leaving, I want to explain, I wanted to make a clarification for public comment purposes. Some of you have turned in a public comment card, I believe related to the public hearing tonight, on, I, well, really, on Chapter 20, changes to Chapter 27. You are welcome to speak at this, at the general public comment. But when we get to the public hearing, there will be 10 minutes for each, for people who agree with the proposed changes, and 10 minutes for people who disagree with the proposed changes. Just as a point of information, and I think it's okay to clarify this, there's no resoning on the agenda tonight. This is simply about language in our code. And so again, when I get to your card, and you're also welcome to speak twice. But if you don't want to speak twice, and you'd rather just wait for the public hearing, feel free to do that. Or I'll call your name, because I have your card, and that's how it works. But anyhow, okay. All right, and there's a handheld microphone that I believe will have to be turned on, Jennifer, is that correct? Jay or somebody will, will manage the microphone for us, please. So the first car I have is Martin Wintermantle. If you'll approach the podium, grab the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes from when you start speaking.
You'll approach with some pictures.
You'll hand them to them, and don't Yes, we'll get them out of the meeting, sir. Thank you.
And help you understand what I'm saying.
Okay. Just hold it, yeah.
Yes, Mayor, council members, you may recall I was here last month. And this is kind of a call up to that, my comments then, except they're a little more precisely prepared, maybe a little more structured. A new house is being built on the lot adjoining mine. For all construction, in full compliance with the building code, I have several comments. When I saw the extent of clear cutting over the six-tenths of an acre lot, literally a dozen or more hundred-year-old hardwoods taken out, I emailed each of you. Only one councilman responded. He visited the site and expressed his concern. However, building code allows this. Dunwoody had an arborist with no tools in her toolbox. We can talk green all day long, but without a code enforcement mechanism, this will continue to be a problem. It's too late for me, this house has been built. But time for council to act is now. We don't have to be broke even. We don't have to be that great, but we have to do better. Initially, the lot was perhaps nine, 10 feet higher than mine. Because I'm at a lower elevation, it slopes. Then the builder moved dirt to raise the front lot elevation another eight feet. When you add the 35-foot height, front height, from the front porch to the top of the roof. At my side yard, I am looking up at approximately 45 feet of a structure, 20 feet from my property lot. Building permits somehow need to address the impact to adjoining properties. In this case, mine is horrendous. One last thing, dressing water runoff with a site plan showing ditch without a specific solution being approved before issuing a building permit is no way to handle the permit. Currently, there is one to two feet of dirt against and above the sill string. 100 foot, 100 feet, the length of my common property line with this adjoining lot. Last month, I was referred to Richard McLeod, nice guy as well. We met, he asked me to meet with the builder, also a nice guy. He recognizes my concern, builder I'm speaking of. But he's unable to firm up a solution at this time, so he's equivocated. Just trust me is not a solution to these kinds of issues. They have to be addressed through exacting particulars in the building permit system.
Thank you, Mr. Reneman.
Thank you.
Melinda. That's a good system for the microphone, thank you. Introduce yourself, and you'll have, are we ready? It's Sharon, are we ready? Yes, okay.
My name is Melinda Misschick. My husband Larry and I have lived in Oro subdivision for 32 years. And two years ago, when we heard that the path was going to go in front of our subdivision, we were thrilled, because we love paths, we believe in what they do for community. And we understood that there were concerns from the people who lived on the front of our subdivision, and we knew that they would be addressed by this body. We have full faith in this council to take care of this. But it's been two years, and we feel like the rest of us have not had our needs and our desires addressed. Because there are plenty of people who do want this path enthusiastically, some are intimidated. And they are not here speaking tonight, but they do want the path. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Is Mayor Shorl still here?
Yes.
Is Shorl, oh, sorry. Mayor Shorl. To be clear, the light comes on on the microphone still, so it's a little confusing. Yes, Mayor? Yes.
Mayor, Council, fellow citizen. I just, I really want to just thank Bill McCann, he's not here, but that's okay. Just the vote of confidence that all of you gave him tonight, you stood up and gave him a hand. You know, I was here for quite a while, and people always said, well, you know, what, what was it like? And I said, you know, 97% of the people in this city are fantastic. The other 3%, I don't even know. But Bill McCann is one special individual. I don't know how many times any of you have sat in his committee, but he analyzes every factor. It's kind of like Donald Winstein here a little bit, he doesn't miss anything. And I just, all of you, you had one heck of a public servant that served you, and Bill McCann. And I think, you know, you just cannot give him enough thanks and enough credit, but I'm here to do it. And Bill, if you listen to this, thanks for everything, you're a great American.
Thank you. Thank you, Betty. Next is Ali. I think I saw you.
City Council Mayor, thank you, my name is Ali. I wanted to start off this meeting by saying things on Dunwoody are actually pretty great. And we all take a step back, especially relative to the cab, and looking around, all the new businesses that have come around, the new residents that are coming around. We had another officer sworn in tonight, which is great, while other places like Atlanta, I don't know what their deficiency rating is, we keep on getting more officers, more people, things are going really, really well. That stated, you know, I had a good opportunity to walk around High Street the other day. And I brought this topic up long ago, and I just wanted to kind of re-serve this a little bit. As we grow, when High Street comes to fruition, we're gonna have a ton of new residents, we're gonna have a ton of new businesses. And with that will come problems. So the purpose of me talking here is to kind of say that we kind of need to continue supporting Chief Carlson and the police department, kind of giving them more resources. I could see more and more issues coming up with all these new developments, all these non-residents coming to Dunwoody, different issues that could arise, businesses, foods, alcohol, getting to the point. We need to kind of get ahead of it. So it's really good to see that we're getting new officers, it's really good to see we're getting new patrol cars. It's really good to see that we're hiring all these non-police officers to kind of handle all these non, I guess, violent kind of incidences, traffic incidences. But I think in this particular situation, we just really need to get ahead of it, kind of figure out what our plan is, when we get all this new influx of people, influx of businesses, what we need to do to kind of stay ahead of it, support the police department, kind of get that, get it, I guess, get, get, get ahead of the issues. And then the second part of this conversation is actually, I was gonna talk to you again about Chatcom. So I brought up a situation, I think a couple months ago, in regards to Chatcom. When you have 911 emergencies, you have your non, non-priority emergencies, car accidents, panhandler, something minor that you just might need a police presence, important, but isn't a priority. And then you've got your serious crime, someone is hurt, something needs to happen right now. Unfortunately, the way the system is, because we use a third-party vendor, is everything goes through the same line. There is no non-emergency, no, everything final through 911, because this, the vendor we're using. A problem with that, obviously, is that it all clogs up, and it could delay the more serious issues. So I've looked into a couple of this, I was in Connecticut this last weekend, they have like a website form, where you can fill something out, it automatically gets sent in, if there's a non-emergency issue, maybe someone indeed, I guess, non, or some, long story short, 30 seconds left, all I'm saying is, I kind of wanted to re-bring that up again. If there's something we can look at to maybe create a non-emergency line, or something else youthful, to where we can separate these two things, we can kind of prioritize different events in Dunwoody, and continue supporting the police department and keep us safe. That was the purpose of my talk today, thank you.
Thank you, Joe Hirsch.
Hello, Joe Hirsch, uh mayor and council. Um as you all know, I've alerted you that last month I sent in an open records request to the city. Uh it's a legal request, as you also know, it's a holy and freedom of information act request. And the response I got back from the city provided some documents. And the city also stated, quote, that they provided all documents on file of the city of Dunwoody that are responsive to my request. In other words, the city said, we've given you everything we have. But I knew that wasn't true, so I asked the city, please look again. And several days later, the city produced twenty more documents. I asked the city, I asked our city clerk, I asked our city manager, I asked all of you, where did these twenty other documents come from? And why were they not given to me when the city said they provided all documents responsive to my request? No one's being held accountable, no one's doing anything about it, and no one seems to care. But it gets worse. Because I also replied, I know that there are at least twelve more documents that the city has not provided me, twelve more. I know this for a fact. What is the matter with the city? Why are you so incompetent? I have expressed before that I believe your actions are criminal. The city has already admitted, for those that don't know, in my lawsuit that I've been working on for the last three years against the city. That Sharon Lowry and Eric Shealy and Jenny RoPage violated numerous things that the city admitted to. And those are misdemeanors. Why does our city manager tolerate this? Why do we have such bad employees still working for us? Why do you not care? It's strange, isn't it? Like, our mayor is quick to respond when there's a car accident on two eighty five, which is wonderful. But never, ever, ever have you spoken up about transparency and following the law. Our city attorney is well over his head. And the law firm that you've hired, Freeman Madison Gary, I pointed out numerous times, they're woefully incompetent. I mean, I hate to give you uh a suggestion to have a better attorney go up against me, but they're a disgrace. They're actually bizarrely incompetent, I don't know why you're wasting tens of thousands of dollars from our city with a horrible law firm defending the indefensible. Now, you might not know, but all the depositions that I filed against or having depositions have been postponed because the city was able to defer them, but it's coming. And we're going to hear more truth, and the city's in bigger trouble than you're willing to admit. Not one of you have had the decency to speak up about transparency. I want to know where those other twelve documents are and when am I going to get them?
Thank you. I think this is one. Judith uh Hopper. Would, this is on the uh public hearing, would you like to speak now? Okay.
Speak again at the public hearing. I.
There should be a microphone.
Green light.
Green light, let's see.
Okay. It has come to my attention that there is construction going on at a facility at the corner of Tilly Mill and North Peach Street. That is right near our Dunwoody North, where I've lived for forty years. Now, familiar with the facility, it used to be a senior care facility, my mother was staying. It's relatively small and only accommodated thirty patients at the time. However, construction is going on and it's my understanding that it is not zoned for a drug rehab facility. And I can't think of a potentially worse location. There are two schools right down the road, there's a public park right down the road, there were three churches. Adjacent and across the street from it, there's the Jewish Community Center right up the road with a huge daycare and summer camp program. There are so many children around here. I'm very concerned about putting a drug rehab facility in the midst of all of these children. The church adjacent to it has Maliki's warehouse that people come to get. You know, things that they need on Tuesday afternoons, there's a lot of traffic there, there's a lot of kids around the baseball field, it's all easy walking distance. Drug rehab facilities that are put into neighborhoods ostensibly to normalize the experience for the patients. They're not usually locked in, they're allowed to go outside. This is not a good place for them to go outside. They need to reconsider this, and why are they being allowed to do construction when they're not even zoned?
Thank you. Kathy Adams Carter.
Yes.
You'll have uh three minutes.
Um my name is Kathy Adams Carter, I'm a resident.
Oh, I'm sorry, you need the microphone.
I know.
Me too, I'm struggling.
My name is Kathy Adams Carter, I'm a resident of Dunwoody North. I'm the vice president of the Dunwoody uh Dunwoody North Civic Association, our president's out of town. So she asked me to come in and speak up on behalf of some of the concerns that have been raised by our members. Um and I understand that there is not a re permitting or that's not the issue, that it's a rezoning issue. Um when folks came to us and raised their concerns about this. Um I did a little bit of research because I wasn't sure whether their concerns were well founded, were visceral, were knee jerk reaction. Or whether their concerns were that that had some evidence to support their concerns. So I found a little bit of research and I haven't read the code before or existing code, I haven't read the changes because I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but. Um so I don't know what the changes, what the code was or what the changes are expected to be. But as it affects that piece of property, um there is research that indicates that rehab centers in residential areas can have a detrimental impact on property values and on the quality of life and on crime. I found one article published by Journal Subs- Sustainable Real Estate. They did in two thousand fourteen and it's a thirty something page article, so I won't tell you all, it has lots of empirical stuff. But the conclusion is that yes, res- rehab centers in residential areas can adversely impact real estate values and can adversely affect crime. And this article goes into all of that and research, but the basic thing is that perception matters in real estate values. It matters whether it's a um the uh an opioid or yet treatment center. It matters whether the folks that are in the rehab center have dual diagnosis. It matters whether or not the folks in rehab center are in fact committing crimes while they are there. And it matters whether or not they finish their program, um because. Um not everyone there has has only addiction, they have other problems. And they they don't finish their treatment, then they will end up with the consequences of that, including being homeless. And we have um, we're running far across the street. So I just wanted to bring those uh factors to the council's attention. And you know, I believe that the concerns of our members are well founded and yes, that you take them into consideration, thank you.
Okay, Jerry Penn. All right, you can pick up the microphone, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I originally was coming to this meeting because of Bill McCann. I met Bill when I was the citizens for Dunwoody. And then I had the pleasure of serving seven years on the zoning board of appeals with Bill. And when I was chairing it, Bill was right to my left. And I can't tell you how he made the whole experience so much better. So I want to thank Bill for his service to the city, his wisdom and his kindness. Truly an extraordinary man. But then I found out about the code concerning drug rehab and I'm vice president of zoning and code enforcement for Dunwoody North Civic Association. And as previously mentioned, I do not feel that drug rehab centers belong in residential communities. There's a house directly next to it on Tilly Mill Road. And as previously stated, Brook Run Park, two schools, baseball fields. And we do not know the backgrounds of those people who, I I commend them for going into drug rehab. But we really don't know their backgrounds and I feel if you're going to revise the code, that you need to take residential communities into consideration.
Wow, that was the most succinct I've been in a long time. Thank you, Jared. Kathy Florence.
Good evening, mayor and council. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the life and the dedication and the pass inside passing of a hero of our community. Lynn Barfield Byrd, a charming lady and a tireless worker for the city she dearly loved and was part of since nineteen eight, nineteen sixty eight, passed away on Friday. A lot of what makes this city special is because of Lynn Byrd. While I won't pretend to know a whole lot about her personal and family life, I would like to tell you a little bit about what I do know. After working as an executive assistant at several of Anna hospitals and raising two sons, she went back to college in her fifties. She earned a BA in anthropology and a master's in heritage preservation. Quite quickly following that, she used what she'd learned and co-founded the Dunwoody Preservation Trust. She enjoys Almacher, her partner in crime, fun and purpose, not only saved the chief's rule house from demolition. But she further convinced the owner, who had purchased the property to build a bank, to deed it to the Dunwoody Preservation Trust. She's single handedly, is she's single handedly responsible for placing three area properties on the national register of historic places. No small task that requires meticulous research. This this prestigious designation was bestowed on Dunwoody's chief's rule house, the Donald Sebastian Farm and the Isaac Roberts House on Roberts Drive. Thanks, Lynn Byrd. She was the author, co-author of The History of Dunwoody Part Two, which which Bill told you about, it's the big red book and there's tons of fabulous stories in there if you haven't read it. But she was also the author of three books on her own, uh on her own. Her first, It's Never Too Late to Graduate, is a nonfiction collaboration of interviews with others like herself who went back to college in later years. She also wrote a quite spicy memoir titled The Sweetness in the Pits: Remembrances of a Georgia Peach. And her third book, The Story of Her Dear Friend and Dunwoody Pioneer Joyce Almacher, she she entitled The Queen of Dunwoody. Joyce and Lynn were also co-in-laws as Joyce's son Dixon is married to Joyce's daughter, Zelda. She and her husband Noah, who passed away three years ago, were well loved at the heart of everything in their neighborhood, their church, their greater community and beyond. She and Joyce were grand marshals of Dunwoody's July Garden Parade in two thousand. Her commitment to the love of this city will live on in many ways. The chief's rule house on Chambley Dunwoody Mount Vernon Road, in fact, is dedicated to the two couples, Noah and Lynn and Joyce and Bill. From a personal note, meeting Lynn Byrd and other dedicated fabulous individuals when I met to, when I moved to Dunwoody in nineteen ninety five, is the reason I fell into, fell in love with this city. I probably met Lynn the very same week or month that I met the fabulous and brilliant Bill McCann and his wife, Wheeze. And um I was thrilled about his recognition tonight, but I would like to, I think you'll also enjoy the fact that. This is my recollection of how it worked, but but Joyce.
You have to stop, I'm sorry, you've got three minutes, it dinged. Sorry, you can come back at the end if we just. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but I have to be consistent. I am so sorry. Um, okay. That concludes the cards, I have to public comment, there will be additional public comment section at the end of the meeting, if you're still here. And with that, uh Eric, it is time for you to do your city manager's monthly report.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, for the uh report, city manager's monthly report ending July fifth, twenty twenty four. Under the Parks Department, we have July thirteenth, Groovin' on the Green featuring the Mount Vernon School and New Way Atlanta. Also, on the eighteenth of July is Dunwoody Food Truck Thursday, plus Park and Recreation Month Celebration. August second, the fix of the park, the map web. Followed by another Groovin' on the Green on August tenth. And then the final uh Groovin' on the Green on September the fourteenth. So one of the, gives the uh public a brief uh what's coming up at the Parks Department. Also, we have all crosswalks and speed tables at Brooklyn Park that have been restripped. The restriping and decorative planters are complete at Wildcat Park, second entrance there. Um so those will mature also, the plants in those, and uh wanted to have a little bit more of a permanent. Uh way to block that entrance at this point in time. We have our little free library restoration at Wimber Hall Park and Georgetown Park. That's a neat service for the community, for the folks. Also, in the police department, we have um police staff have been preparing for the Operation Forest Security Plan, the Fourth of July Parade. I want to thank police again for a phenomenal response and showing there at the parade to keep all the citizens of Dunwoody safe during an event. Twenty twenty four Team Police Academy, uh started today, takes place through the twelfth of this month. With ongoing registrations, if anything, if anybody wants to attend that, please contact the police department. Also, we have registrations currently open for the next Citizen Police Academy that plays on August thirteenth through November the fourteenth of this year. And our real time crime center is scheduled to be open on July the twelfth. So that is, that could be a really um unique event to have that open and the technology is available for police work in today's environment. Also, the Citizen Patrol had their eighth anniversary on June sixth. And we also have uh eight public safety ambassador candidates that are in the background process for the fall positions, so we have a huge response there. When you have a chance, please look at the crime stats that are within the reports. The Public Works Department, the twenty twenty four paving program completed the paving for Adams Walk, Village North Port, Village North Road, Northbrook Circle, Northbrook Lane. Also, we have North Peach Tree and perimeter center west beacon poles have been constructed. And in the Vermont Road Phase Two Trail, the drainage on the west side has been completed, the road is open to through traffic again, and the trail work uh will begin this week. Georgetown Gateway, that's the final striping, is scheduled to begin on July eleventh. That project's been uh ongoing for quite a while, it's wrapping up at this point in time. The uh Dunwoody Nature Center, uh weapons restoration, which is a grant funded request, was submitted to the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Also, the Strongwater Projects, submitted during June, include Fountain with Port, Buckline Crossing. Under Communications, we have the summer edition of the Dunwoody Digest, has been mailed to all residents and businesses. We have a string buffer message that went out, uh has been created on our webpage and social media posts for rules about moving trees and building in the string buffers. And that's an important note, I want to. Please be sure before you cut trees on your property that you're not in the string buffer, because that does create problems. And and it's not just with the city of Dunwoody, but there are state buffers and state requirements have to be followed. When you find some homeowners getting in trouble with that, it's you and contractor may or may not know what the rules are in Dunwoody or the state, so please contact community development before you. Cut trees if you're in a buffer. Also, uh Communications posted tents at the Juneteenth Celebration, which was a joint mission with Sandy Springs and Dunwoody. And also, we got a tent, July Fourth Parade. Community uh Development has High Street is open to the public with all buildings receiving certificates of occupancy. Business will continue uh to open during the next few months. Campus two four four has opened. Uh the main office building received their C O. And also, construction of the hotel and retail will continue. Also, we have our work on the comprehensive plan and Unified Development Code kicked off on June the twentieth. The first public hearing is scheduled for July twenty second at the city council meeting. Under Economic Development, we have Swiss Law announced a twenty six thousand square foot lease, just down the street at the terraces. And also, the Transportation, uh Transportation Insight moved their new all new hundred seventy four thousand square. And also, the Transportation, Transportation Insight moved their new, new hundred and seventy-four thousand square foot headquarters at Campus two four four. There's five hundred initial jobs. And just a, was it last week, before Mayor, the governor came out to that building, taking a look at the operation there. So that was a nice event to be held over at Campus two four four. The, the monthly financial report for May twenty twenty-four was published on the finance page, the city website, and also the cares webpages have been updated through the end of May. But Mayor, one last item I wanted to note, which is under the courts, was we've disposed of over five hundred and one cases in the last month and reset twenty-one cases in the courtroom. We have our amnesty program that's wrapping up this month. We're trying to clear the calendar. Again, another public message for anybody who has an outstanding ticket or warrant with the City of Dunwoody Courts, please take advantage of the amnesty program, come in and have that corrected. If not, you may end up in an unfortunate situation in another jurisdiction, get a warrant for your arrest. You'll be arrested. This seems an opportunity to have that cleared up before you even run into that kind of difficulty. But Mayor and Council, if I had any questions, City staff is here as well to answer questions. Is there any?
Okay, I'm just gonna pass the microphone. Thank you, Mayor. Two quick thank yous to you and your staff for a quick turnaround. I had a constituent talk to me about the location of that second Wildcat Park entrance. It was done in a matter of weeks and it really looks much better, so I appreciate that. And also, as we do our connect with council, I want to thank the Communications Department for putting together a nice fabric, so you're the professional and you can come. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thanks. I just wanted to share a couple of observations from the report that that you didn't touch on, but I thought might, might warrant a little bit of recognition. One is that it looks like the Georgetown Gateway Project is almost done. There's just a few final touches here and there. So I think folks down there will be very happy to see that. And then the other thing is I dug into the, the crime stats report with the Police Department. And it's always interesting to see which numbers kind of go up, which numbers kind of go down. And one that jumped off the page at me was the community events are up two hundred and eighty-four percent, which means that our Police Department is doing a significant amount of community outreach compared to past years. And I just think that's great. And I just wanted to point that out, make sure that that the, the folks are.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, Officer Fernandez, and she's doing it by herself. So at least I have another opening that's up there. So now she, now only she handling security, but I appreciate that recognition. I will definitely pass my law to her. She's looking very firm in decision.
I think, yeah, I just have one question. I just have one question. Uh, um, about the Gateway signage. This seems to be another thing that's taking an exceptionally long time to get completed. Uh, I, I, with the fabrication, and it said like shop drawing revisions, so I thought all of the design work on these were done. Is it design changing or is this just how the signage put together? I, I'm just curious when we might expect these to start being installed, because it seems like it's taking an exceptionally long time.
Richard, Richard coming up. Didn't hear anything about.
No, it's not your department. It's public work. It's public work.
Hey, hi, I'm Sophie Walback. I'm with the Public Works Department. Our project is going. It's a lot of shopping, a lot of stuff.
You got us. I'm sorry, can you hold it closer and then?
Um, it's, uh, we are still reviewing shop drawings. The project, we bid it out and it's like designed specifically for the city of Dunwoody. So the shop drawings are only for the city sign, so we're working on reviewing and approving them. And they have to be any one true, so.
Do you have an ETA?
Yeah. No, not yet.
We'll give you just more information.
Yeah, it's about to approve them.
If the preferred, if the winning bidder can get it done, I think we should explore our options, but we'll all have to figure that out.
We'll get your answer a little bit.
Chief, if you could expand on the real-time video wall. I know we proved, I know it's there, but if, like, when it goes live July twelfth, what, what's it gonna look like? Just explain how it's gonna fit your operations.
So Real Time Crime Center, so it is scheduled to be turned on this Friday. We do have a date set for the official grand opening next month. So essentially what it does, we're using the Flock technology, which consists of our Raven, Condor camera system, and our licensed by theaters. What this Real Time Crime Center does is kind of brings all of that together on one screen. So when it's staff, I'm gonna work on staffing it full-time eventually. However, critical incidents, supervisors that can go in there, will have that real-time. We can pull up those videos. We are working with our businesses right now. We have not had any kickback on being able to federate their cameras at their businesses to, to bring in, to our Flock OS, Flock OS operating system. So we're excited. It is going to enhance our capabilities. I mean, technology right now, I mean, I, I thank all of you for your support in us incorporating that into our operations as a police department. It has the amount of crime that comes into the city that is detected and that our officers can respond to has been phenomenal. And, you know, the technology is all across the nation and, you know, we are actually working with our, our surrounding agencies as well. So we're excited to get it up and running. We will, you know, we are going to be monitoring, you know, the success of it. You know, success stories of how this is kind of working. So I would thank all of you.
Yeah, Eric, thank you very much for the report. Again, I just want to shout out also to the three men in truck, or is it four men or people out there on the roads. And I, I know for the Fourth of July, they're taking it up another notch, because I'm looking, they are, you know, getting rid of the grass and the, the herbs, their edging, they're out there today, working out there. And I just compare and contrast, if you go to unincorporated DCF, and I'm driving around or riding my bicycle around, and it's absolutely not like that at all. So I really appreciate that pride, that we were able to perform those citizen services to like that. We can do that, given the current, we'll be talking about a bunch a little bit later, but we've added those services to what the city is doing, whereas a few years ago we did not, right? So I appreciate that. And of course, the Fourth of July parade was excellent. Thank you again to the Dunwoody Police's support and the Dunwoody, uh, President, uh, Dunwoody Motors Association, while it took the break. And back to my wheelhouse of safe streets, pedestrian safety, I'm so super excited to see that pedestrian beacon, the crossing being put up on North Peachtree, Cross from Chestnut, to help those children and just adults just walk safely again. I, anodally, I, why, why, you know, it's just, it's just a great opportunity to help traffic and through safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Number three, already we done it. You're ready for public hearing. You're ready. Eric, can I get your microphone, please? Oh, wait, no, never mind. She's gonna use it.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a resolution of the Mayor Council of the City of Dunwoody, Jordan, to state this add more tax rate in the City of Dunwoody for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Evening, Mayor. Mayor of the Capitol, I'm Delicia Robinson, Assistant Finance Director. I'm here to present the third and final public hearing for the two thousand twenty-four military adoption. After the presentation, we'll open the floor for a big comment and for council questions. The state law requires the City of Dunwoody to hold free public hearings to approve this year's military. Although the military statewide remain at three point oh four mils, the same rate as the prior two years. The tax rate for two thousand twenty-four will also include a one mil reduction for all homestead and property. Also, around eighty-four percent of residential houses in the City of Dunwoody have applied or qualified for permanent fees for their home value for tax purposes. So qualify, no matter what, city taxes will stay the same. For a little background, on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, the city received a tax deduction, which is a great value of all property here in the City of Dunwoody by the Board of Tax Assessment. Values approved by the Board of Tax Assessment require three public hearings. Two public hearings are already held on June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Tonight is the final public hearing held in conjunction with the adoption of the rate. So to give some background, this graph shows the City of Dunwoody total digest value from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-four. Despite the net digest growing three point four four percent this year, calculations required by state law take it to a top, accounts reassessment, so the city has to say this is an increase above the rollback rate of five point eight percent. It's also important to restate that City of Dunwoody has assisted homeowners by installing a property assessment agreement. Homestead properties that qualify this for the screens will see no increase in their two thousand twenty-four taxes. So here's some additional information on the City of Dunwoody's digest. This graph shows the year-over-year percentage change in net digest for the City of Dunwoody. As you can see, the prior two years show a robust change. This year, we're at three point four four percent. So even though the rate of growth is decreasing, the digest for Dunwoody is still possible. So this graph shows net digest by category, separates commercial and residential. The orange line represents commercial values, the blue line represents residential values. So if you look at this by category, the net commercial values are the largest share of growth historically. The net commercial digest by itself shows the year-over-year growth of eight point two four percent. The city's general fund budget was passed in October two thousand twenty-three, but like omniscient budgets is adjusted based on current revenue estimates. The council approved several adjustments to the original budget, including pay raises, additional staffing for police. So with that being said, we wanted to show what's coming in and what's going out of our general fund. This graph shows the two thousand twenty-four general fund estimated revenue of what's coming into the city's general fund for property taxes being a third of the general fund revenue. This graph shows the two thousand twenty-four general fund estimated expenses are what's going out of the city's general fund. The police, public safety makes up thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of estimated expenses, followed by parks and recreation. We would also like to share some additional information on House Bill five eighty-one. Voters in Georgia will be asked to approve a statewide zoning homestead extension in November. If passed, all homestead and values will be frozen to properties exonerated, except for the regular inflation. Dunwoody's rates, however, is more restrictive, does not allow for a base hearing. So whether or not state law passes, Dunwoody's laws still in effect. With this being the final public hearing of the two thousand twenty-four military, staff recommends adoption of the three point oh four military.
This concludes the two thousand twenty-four military presentation. Thank you for your time. Thank you. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing unless there's an objection from someone on council saying none. This public hearing is opened. We will have public comments from those, we'll have ten minutes for each side. So if there's a line of people, maybe keep your comments short. There's not a lot of people left, but, um, just in case. So those in favor of keeping the village rate the same, feel free to stand up and the first person can approach the microphone.
Well, with steam. I don't pay enough in Dunwoody city taxes. That's the bottom line, is that the cost of providing city services has gone up every year, and my Dunwoody city taxes have not gone up to help pay for that. And while we are at the maximum that the law allows us, it should be higher. And we need to be working not to lower the rates, but to raise them. So I would encourage you to vote in favor of retaining the maximum village rate that we can have. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for maintaining the military? Anyone like to speak? Oh, come on, Ms. Reed. All right, you'll just introduce yourself.
My name is Susan Reed, and I'm always humbled when I come to these meetings, because I'm one of those citizens that stays way under the radar. And, and I realize when I come here how much I have. I'm so grateful. I want the village rate. We got to pay for what we have, and we have so much in Dunwoody. I want to shout out to the Police Department. I'm a very law-abiding person, but I have had innumerable interactions with the Dunwoody Police. They've always been where the police officers have been in service, with one exception, I had my one and only speeding ticket in Dunwoody. But we, we need what we, we need to pay for what we have. I just wanted to say that. And thank you all for this.
Thank you. All right, is there a speaking for the military to them? Yes.
Well, I'm really not. Okay, I'm gonna get up and have my say. All right, Mayor, Council.
My name is Sue Ellis, and I've lived in Dunwoody for thirty-seven years. I enthusiastically voted yes when the cityhood was on the ballot. And since then, you have done a great job. For fifteen years now, you have taken your fiduciary responsibility to the citizens very seriously and managed the city tax revenues and other forms of, of funding in a responsible manner, starting with paving, lease and parks. I want attention to those three Ps and other vital needs like improved emergency services at considerable expense to the city to continue. With well-deserved salary increases and the heightened cost of all material and services, we would gladly pay a higher city tax rate. My husband and I have a modest home and a decaf property bill of fifty-eight hundred dollars. Eighty percent of that goes to the decaf schools. Our city taxes are five percent or three hundred and twelve dollars. We pay fifteen percent more of that for the finest sanitary, decaf sanitary garbage pickup that you could, you could have. It, it seems to me we should be paid more in taxes. So bottom line, Richard and I think it's time to consider a tax rate increase.
Thank you. All right, and I'll see if anyone else. If anyone is here to object to maintaining the village rate at the level it is, please step forward, introduce yourself. There's ten minutes for this.
Hey, um, my name's Yvonne Liam Sposs. I am a resident. Um, and I'm raising my Tucson boys here. They're adorable. I would have brought them with me, but they're disrupted. Um, but I actually, like, I got confused about when I was supposed to speak, but I agree with what has been said. You know, we've spent this whole meeting hearing about how great Dunwoody is. You know, when my husband and I had our kids, we lived in the city of Atlanta and we chose to move. And when we moved out, we looked at a whole bunch of the local communities around here. Um, I work in Alpharetta. My husband works in Sandy Springs, but we live in Dunwoody because of the parks and because of everything else and because of police and because of all of these great things. And my tax bill also is much lower than I think it needs to be. And I saw something when I was researching for this meeting that the last time y'all raised the village rate, it cost the average citizen like eighty-one cents a day or something. That's absurd. We'll pay seven dollars for coffee at Starbucks, but we won't pay more than eighty-one cents a day for everything the city gives us. So I'm speaking against it, not because, please, like, not because I think y'all should lower it at all, but because I think that we should do everything we can to support things and raise them and increase them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? A question. Uh, we, that's not, that's not how these work. I'm sorry. It's a, you can make it some after the you could, we can't answer your question, but you can make a comment if you want, and then we can maybe ask it during the presentation. Sorry, it's open records, open meetings.
Hi. My name is Mary Shanks. I live at the corner of Lakes Springs Way and Tilling Mill.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a microphone. We have a, we had a lightning strike. It's coming, sorry. She came in like, that's okay, we had a lightning strike and we still, the one in front of you that's not permanent does not work.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, you didn't have.
I, I'm Mary Shanks and uh, I've been a resident of Dunwoody for thirty years. And I live at the corner of Tilling Mill and Lakes Springs Way. And I just wanted you to know last night, apparently lightning struck the house tiny. I counted eleven. They close outside. You talk about having the lights on everywhere. Uh, that was a response that I there was uh, no sirens that I heard. I was in the living room, so I was right outside and uh, uh, I just wanted you to know we had a good response. So I was very glad to say that.
Thank, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Once there's additional public comment, I close. This has been rejection from council. I close this public hearing. And now we'll have questions and comments from council. Um, all right, we can share the microphone in case I have anything. Okay, is, is uh Stacy?
Oh, I thought you were asking.
No, I'm not here. Um, I just want to point out one important thing, that the, the state law requires that we have this, these meetings because there is a growth in our digest. And the truth is, is in most jurisdictions across the state with the exception of a handful of cities um, in DeKalb, uh, where you have a value, DeKalb has a value freeze for the county and they have, some of the cities have uh, frees. And then we have a, we have some other things in Dunwoody, we have other layers in Dunwoody that most other cities and jurisdictions don't have. When their digest goes up, your tax rate goes up. Now, for schools, which we have zero control over and virtually no influence, your tax rate, you, if your village, an increase in value causes it to raise. They did lower their village rate this year and they lowered it last year. So when you get your final bill, it should show a little lower than what you got on the estimate, I think. But the thing is, is for city taxes, if you, if you've been in your house for a decade or more and you look at what you've paid, so you can actually go back on the city, the county's website till two thousand sixteen, I think, which is about nine years. You can see that it's, for many of you, if you've been in your house a long time, you've been paying three hundred dollars or so a year, which equals twenty seven hundred dollars, three thousand maybe for the last ten years. It's the same for the five years before, because we have, we have all these freezes and exemptions and things. But um, I'm very proud of this job we do funding um, and delivering what really are world-class services, I think. Um, certainly best-of-class services in a lot of areas on probably the most restrictive um, residential property tax situation in the state. So just wanted to commend our staff for that. Um, and yes, we know your bills went up because the school system taxes went up and we are, the school system is slowly lowering though. So that helps. Um, this is an action item, so uh, if there's no further discussion, we'll need action. Move to a group.
Sorry.
So we're moving to maintain the military at its current level. All in favor say aye. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any votes? Thank you all. Um, this year and there is, as the presentation said, there is a resolution, there is a referendum on the ballot this November that will make some changes, none of which will affect Dunwoody because our rules are more restrictive than what they're proposing. But it will eliminate some of the confusion caused by these meetings because the meetings will only be necessary if you're raising your village rate. Not if you're just, not if your digest is broken. All right, share on the table. Just when you're ready.
The next item on the agenda is an ordinance from the chapter twenty seven, zoning ordinance in the city of Dunwoody and ordinances to define residential residences, recovery, and these spreading regulations for such use.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, glad to bring this to you today, the first read and it's a public hearing. Uh, it's been uh, in the making since last year with, it's been reached at initial moratorium on this. And I'm glad to bring this to your consideration today. Why need chat? How do I move this guys?
Um, right here. And there we go.
Uh, quick summary uh, to why we're bringing this. Um, this comes because the zoning ordinance has a gap in the regulations uh, that leaves the city potentially deeply vulnerable. Uh, to close that gap, proposing regulations today that uh, try to uh, balance different interests here. Uh, one, to provide access to treatment options. And on the second hand, uh, we do not want to overwhelm the city's neighborhoods. Um, what we intend to propose today is a compromise solution that achieves both things. So this tax amendment, so opportunistically, we're also using this to address recent changes in state law and I have a state, uh, I have a slide later in the presentation with this that we're proposing to incorporate into our ordinance as well. And we have, this is one of the items. So we have drug rehabilitation centers and other facilities for treatment of drug dependency in our code. It references in four different sections that I've mentioned here. And this is to incorporate a state law that was passed uh, a while ago, um, that generally uh, requires public hearing to be held a longer period before an action can be taken uh, for rezoning and special land use permit hearings. We have, on the other hand, in nowhere in the code is defined as they use drug rehabilitation center or other facility, but we've got drug dependency defined. And it is not included in the use table. So we have something that is considered in the zoning ordinance but is not allowed anywhere in any district, which potentially leaves us uh, vulnerable. Um, we proposed uh, to you all the moratorium that was passed last year and has been extended twice. This currently running through August thirteenth to allow us to post picks, which we are proposing today. And then overall background, um, is that people with substance use, dissolution or addiction issues uh, who are undergoing a supervised rehabilitation program uh, are considered under federal or considered protected class. They're actually considered a similar class than people with mental health or physical disabilities. Before under, yeah, as handicapped people have the same protections. But currently the ordinance has some of these, uh, some of these people considered. So for instance, we have personal care home in there. We have supportive living, living arrangements, which are all uses that, that address a specific aspects of this group. And we're proposing uh, with this to do a cleanup of all of those and treat them the same, um, instead of having different regulations or different subsections of this protected class. We're proposing two groups uh, based on the land use impacts. Uh, one was smaller scale facilities. So this is a dwelling unit. So this is um, when you think of a personal care home, it's something similar to that. Um, which we call the community residence. And we're proposing this for all the handicapped residents, whether that is a physical disability or a mental disability or a substance use disorder to route this under the community residence use category and then have the second larger scale option for mental health and substance use disorder and that one's more similar to nursing homes. So if you think of a more uh, institutional facility, this is not a dwelling, it's not a dwelling unit anymore. This is something that centralized facilities and centralized uh, treatment and we call this the recovery community. We're closing two separate use categories for this, the community residence and the recovery community. Based on land use impact, we propose to below uh, use categories, community residence, which is the dwelling unit, we would allow in single dwelling residential district. So this is your single family home neighborhoods, the established neighborhoods. And we propose to allow there with a special land use permits. So it would require planning commission review, city council review, similar to uh, if you remember last year when they had a personal care home come through. So this would not be, this would not be a free fall. There would be a um, there are a lot of review and consideration over those uses. In the more intense zoning districts and the multi-running residential or the commercial districts, we propose to allow it's permitted use. And then Dunwoody Village as a special use again, but for special land use permits. Recovery community as a more institutional use or a more intense use, was not a problem in the same term districts. Instead of allowing in multi-running residential districts and similar to nursing homes, allow commercial districts and then Dunwoody Village as a special use of special land use permits. And then to, because it's a, you, you have heard this sort of partially today. We've heard this before, uh, the planning commission that it is an issue with feelings on both sides from community members. And we created new standards to attempt to balance the global community character of the different areas of the city with providing a path towards access to treatment options. Now I want to go through the different use standards proposing today. First one is spacing requirements. And this is a half mile distance from other community residences and recovery communities. So each one of those facilities would have to be at least a half mile away from another facility. This uh, for, this prevents clustering um, and uh, spacing these facilities apart. Um, the twofold interest in this, first, it prevents individual neighborhoods in the city from becoming overburdened. And then second, from a treatment standpoint, treatment has been shown to be more effective as well if these facilities are well-integrated in the neighborhood and by spacing them out and not creating an institutional district through the back door. We attempt to um, have these people better integrated in, in the larger communities. Should there be a need to be within the half mile buffer, uh, there would be a special land use permit as an outlet uh, provided. And this map shows a snapshot of the existing facilities. These are the facilities that we're aware of, that the state is aware of in, in the city of Dunwoody that are licensed, licensed. You see them in some yellow, not yellow, um, violet little like boxes there. Um, the circles around these boxes are the half mile radius, uh, radii. So in those areas, no other facilities could be placed unless special land use permits obtained in specific circumstances. You've heard from a few people here who are concerned, like residents from the Dunwoody North neighborhood about specific parcel on Teddy Mill and North Peachtree Road. That parcel would be included based on the existing facilities in that buffer, so could not be operated without a special land use permit first. The second, this, uh, second distance requirement that we're proposing, the distance requirement if schools um, that addresses practically some of the concerns we've been hearing about uh, these facilities. Um, this a thousand foot distance requirement compliant in secondary schools uh, to address safety concerns that people may have and, and the impact of all public resources. Again, it is possible to go within that buffer, but it requires special land use permits. And then the buffer around schools is shown here around different school facilities that we have. Um, and this, the, the small blue circles show the thousand footer school facilities. Next, for any one of these users, um, we're proposing to require an operations plan. Because we have a broad category that includes uh, people with physical disabilities, people with um, mental disabilities, people with substance use disorder. Issues of posing uh, that each one of those have been as operations plan that summarizes staffing um, and overall treatment. It will also require that operators practically consider the transition of residents and this can happen in in a few different ways. Uh, treatment can be successful and people can move back into into the community, into their homes where they lived before. And hopefully it will also be unsuccessful. Then people need to be connected to other, to other resources. And uh, for financial reasons, it can be, um, it can be, you know, short-term. And we're asking them to have a, a transition plan ready for each one of those scenarios. And, and finally, then this use category is broad and the state of Georgia does not have specific licensing requirements for uh, each type of those facilities. We will recommend people either going for the state license where applicable. We will also recommend to obtain nonprofit licensing regulations. There are certain nonprofit entities that um, that license, license these types of facilities to ensure that that standard is met and people in, in either way, we will ask them to show us how similar, similar standards are met. Facility capacity, I mentioned this before, that the community residence is supposed to, they're supposed to merit dwelling units. These are facilities for people that live as a community and the operators are household together. So with the proposed regulations, we'd limit them to, to no more than five residents. For treatment, uh, treatment can be, uh, treatment can be expensive and it may need certainly hundreds of scale. So more residents would be allowed through the special land use permit process where we could review the impact on the community of these facilities. This is more than the four hundred eight people that are allowed on the uh, on the current rules in the in a single term requirement, for instance. But anything more than five people would require special land use permits. Recovery communities, as they function more like nursing homes, do not have occupancy limits, but they're limited through dimensional standards in the districts. And then finally, additional use standards uh, to again proactively address some safety concerns that people may have. We are preventing sex offenders from living there and also this, these are not halfway houses. These are homes for disabled people in the community. These are not places where people come out from prisons, so people who have been residing at specific address due to parole probation conditions can also not live at those places. And then for recovery communities, this is not supposed to be a, a slow marching transition of existing apartment communities. These have to be standalone uh, parcels. Um, this is not a specific unit in the apartment community. Your specific building, a lot of apartment community, this has to be a standalone facility. Planning commission reviewed this. Um, initially, the requirements or distance requirements for the difference is proposing to seven thousand five hundred P's, this is from existing Is proposing to seven thousand five hundred feet, this is going from existing facilities. So both for community residences and recovery communities, planning commission has recommended boosting this to uh a half mile. Two thousand six hundred and forty feet, but this is part of uh of the ordinance part of view. And then the initial proposal also included a thousand foot, this is going to park, planning commission has recommended, striking that. And with those changes, planning commission has recommended in our school uh for for ordinance. Um I'm putting this out here right now because these are levels, these are levels um. For thinking about regulating this, so um what I would like you all to discuss is uh the the distance requirements. Then the added to like, uh the added to another item. Uh the the states uh passed that law, this here is a hospital ten seventy three, which the governor signed in May. That removes the additional hearing requirements for drug prevention centers, this is functionally what I showed you. What I've shown you earlier is those sections in the code that we have in our code because we were baiting copy it all from state law. So state has taken this out, proposing to take those out of our code as well. These facilities were the only facilities in the city that had these longer uh hearing requirements. And by taking these out, it would treat these facilities similar to any other land use in the city. This would not decrease the number of hearings, this would not decrease participation, it would just compress the timeline. Then to summarize, um what this proposed language does is provide a pathway for both. Small facilities and large facilities who operate in the city, so provides a pathway for treatment. While it prevents clustering uh in a specific neighborhood in the city. And it maintains protections and room for community inputs. But it simplifies the code by consolidating several group home categories that we currently have in the code and. And consolidating them into a community residence category. And then this is a first read um. And the public hearing eventually receive a second read and then you may decide to adopt the case. For the the ordinance. And with this, um I'd like to conclude the staff presentation, I'll be available for any questions and um. Yeah, I'd love to see what the the council says. And Paul, you're the deputy community attorney.
I, I want to close your presentation for now, thank you. Alright, with that, I will, unless there's an objection, I will open the public hearing with the reminder that we are talking. About an ordinance change, there's no specific resoning in front of us now, just I want to clarify that of a sense of aim, Mr. Attorney. This is, this is in your for the proposed changes to the ordinance. Uh we have ten minutes for each side, I'll invite anyone in favor to come speak. Um in favor of ordinance changes, I see no one, um and then we have ten minutes. Uh for those in opposition of the changes.
Good evening, Mayor of the Council, my name is Robert Wittstein, and as much as I was delighted to honor Bill and to. Encourage you to keep the village ready, the real reason I'm here tonight is for these changes to check, we said. I I want to start by telling you something you already know, and that is that communities are judged by how they treat their most vulnerable people. Think this ordinance falls short in how we ought to be treating the most vulnerable among us. And I encourage you to make some changes. First, I want to acknowledge that most of the places that we are talking about have been operating in Dunwoody for years. And they operate below the radar and they make good neighbors. And most of them are Dunwoody citizens and residents. Second, I want to point out that citizens in general, when changes are being made. There's this tendency to um, uh to to retreat to FUD. Right, FUD, fear, uncertainty, and doubt. And the end result becomes that you get afraid that you're not going to like something that's going on in your neighborhood. You're afraid that maybe you'll have a bad neighbor. Most of these places, and and by that I mean most of the uh care homes that have been operated for years, do so without being bad neighbors, but. I also want to point out, it is not the job of the city council to ensure that nobody has a bad name. I have barking dogs, I have teenagers who are in and out at all hours of the night. I have uh one guy across the street who loves to his his leaf blower early in the morning on a Saturday, right? It isn't, it isn't your job to ensure that we are all free from any irritation or aggravation, it is our job. To protect the most vulnerable in our society. I'm specifically going to ask you to 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 consider two changes. One change is to further reduce the distance between facilities from a half a mile to a quarter mile. And to open up more of Dunwoody to the opportunity for for facilities to be closed. I note that we have no requirement that massage parlors be any distance apart, and we have some that are in the same block. And I can't imagine that facilities that treat people in our neighborhoods need to have that level of separation. So rather than half a mile, I would encourage you to take that to a quarter mile. I'd also suggest one other thing, and and Paul talked about it briefly, and that is the number of residents in care. Today, the ordinance allows up to seven. The proposed ordinance lowers that to five and provides for an exception up to seven with a slot. The issue here is that for most of these care homes, they require the cost of treatment. To be shared by a larger number of people to be cost effective, so if you're going to have a caregiver there around the clock. You have to be able to pay for that, you pay for that by assessing the fee on each of the residents. And it becomes more cost effective if you can spread that out among six residents rather than among four residents. So I would encourage you to make those two changes, and with those changes, I think this is something that the community can be proud of, and I thank you for your attention.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against these changes? Oh, actually, against the proposed order of change.
Against, yes, correct, um hi, Yvonne Williams, once again, um. I didn't realize this was even on the agenda, I'll admit it, but I am an attorney and so I follow the presentation pretty well, and I see all the legal reasons for making the changes. Um I speak to you as a mom and a community member. And want to stress the importance of what is going on in our country right now, it is. Thinking about this in a vacuum to look at studies from any time prior to twenty fifteen. In the past couple of years, Georgia has had an incredible epidemic in the opioid crisis and. I hope none of y'all have been touched by it, but there is no way that we can survey everyone in this room and say that we weren't touched by it. And I'm someone who has been, and I'll tell you that the opioid crisis is a crisis that impacts anyone. You can think that that you're never going to have a drug problem in your family, opioids will comfort it. I say this because in the state of Georgia, when you look at people who have overdosed on drugs. The number of people who overdosed on drugs from heroin, which is what we think when we're talking about drugs, we're thinking heroin or thinking nineteen eighties movies like. Those are drug users, say no to that. That rate was fewer than two thousand people in Georgia, there were more than eight thousand opioid deaths. So we have a community crisis and a community need, and I know people, I know mothers. Who have had to send their kids to treatment facilities that are not here, so this isn't about bringing strangers in. This is about a place for us to send our loved ones when our community gets sick. So I was actually all for the presentation, I thought it was great, but I really want to echo this gentleman's comment that five is not. A reasonable number and decreasing into that is not, you know, I don't think it is rationally based, I don't think it is evidence based, then I would. Suggest that you scrutinize that number and see what our needs are in our community, because this is a community crisis, it's a Georgia crisis. And it's a crisis that is blowing up. So I would ask you to consider that in your review of this, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak to oppose the proposed changes? Right, okay, how much time is left?
Okay, help me pass, okay. I've already said what I said before, so I'm not going to repeat it, but in response to this gentleman's comments and the effect of clustering. I have an office that's at the corner of Infinite Square and Peeler. And on at least two occasions within the last year, folks have come into my office who were clearly. In need of mental health services, and I strongly suspect that Peachford Hospital put those folks out on the street. I don't know that for a fact, all I know is that they came into my office, that they uh asked for help in a way that. My law firm doesn't provide services, they were clearly, clearly um. They need a mental health assistance, so to think that, hey, you're a mouth, we can have all of these folks. In one area clustered up, no distance between them. I respectfully submit to you that that would have a huge impact on the folks that live in that area or even have an office in that area, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, unless there's anyone else, we will close this public hearing and. Call in return if there are any questions or comments, I'm just gonna, I know it's not how we normally do it, but I'm just gonna have to catch my phone there.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share a couple of observations and then I have a question, so my my first observation is.
We need to hold it closer to you.
My my first observation is, it's very clear from reading this from all of the discussions we've had with the. The moratoriums, that we need to find some sort of balance between the needs of the community and the healthcare needs in our community. So I appreciate that you finally have something for us that we can talk about. Last year, after the first extension of the moratorium, I actually went around and visited um. A couple of these drug treatment facilities, that I was unaware of where they were, one was in the village. Uh and that is a day treatment facility, and then one was a residential treatment facility right across the street from Brooklyn Park. Not the parcel that we're talking about, that's the um, the uh, that that's being renovated right now, this is an existing operating facility. Um and so, I think there are ways for these facilities to be in our communities and be operated safely. And and hopefully we can come up with the right standards and put that in, uh one question I have is kind of after they're in place. If there's an issue, if you could just speak to to code enforcement and how that might be handled, I think that might also help with some of the discussions and the thoughts, just. I know, for example, outdoor smoking was actually, so so if you could just kind of talk about. How how those are handled and how you might regulate once, once a facility or existing or new facilities are.
And we had, um, the smoking comes up from time to time, that's in fact the the complaint that we get most often. But it tends to be people who um start one addictive behavior, pick up another one and smoking tends to be the. The behavior of choice, um, this is weird, this is almost the only thing that received, like, these are. Fundamentally, these are not hotspots for uh code enforcement complaints in in the city of Dunwoody, none of those facilities. That that you had mentioned, um if if there is an issue, we will reach out, we will go out to the community. The operators are generally, they want to be, at least the existing operators that we have, generally want to be under the radar. They do, they work with us to get issues resolved. For those smoking cases, we we went out and we, we asked them to move away from um. From the the proper lines uh to to go away and they. Um they've done it, but but these are not hotspots for code enforcement complaints.
That's on, okay, uh thank, well first, I just want to begin by thanking you and the staff for all of your work on this, this is um. These are rarely easy topics to to uh, to find the best solution on, um, you have to balance. Uh the needs of the community and the treatment needs of those that may need it with the protection of the neighborhoods and. And uh and do that all within the guardrails of state and federal law, so uh anyone that thinks this is an easy task. Uh it is not, uh and so, I believe it's it's our responsibility in these cases to to strike the best balance. Um and 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 determining what's best for our community, I did a lot of my own independent research on this. Onto the care facilities, both uh our community residents and what would qualify as a recovery community. And in doing my research, the most startling thing for me was the inconsistency. Inconsistencies in the effects on neighborhoods, inconsistencies in the set centers themselves, inconsistencies in the treatments of the. Of the patients at these facilities and what the deeper I dove. Uh the the more I think I learned that those differences. Are are from facility, facility, from operator to operator, and I think what happens a lot of times when we have a crisis like we do now, there's no. There is no big crisis in this country, um, treatment centers are going to pop up, they're going to be on a large spectrum, those those treatment facilities. I would like to think that the facilities we have here in Dunwoody are good operators. Uh they're doing a good job uh with their patient's best interest in mind. That doesn't mean that every operator that comes to town is going to check that box, um and there may be profiteers. Trying to get on a bandwagon, so again, this is all about balancing and and trying to figure out how we do this. I do think that the um, the recommendations that the, that staff initially came up with were. Struck a pretty good balance there, um, it was actually, uh, Mr. Wittstein, who I have a lot of respect for, we actually saw each other a couple of weeks ago at a. At an event and we had a conversation about this topic, and when he first talked to me, I I said, you know, that makes a lot of sense. Uh but then I I, quite honestly, as I tend to do, I overanalyze things. And uh was thinking about it and 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 really, I think for me, is putting distances into perspective. And so, like, for example, a thousand feet requirement for a park, uh a thousand feet is one point eight nine miles. Uh to put that perspective, that's like, I mean, point one, one point one eight nine, sorry, I got my desk. Got my desk will place in the wrong spot, so to put that perspective, that'd be like walking from the front door of City Hall to where the Chili's used to be next door. Uh for the average person, that's a three and a half mile walk, I think, a three, three, three and a half minutes, geez. A three and a half minute walk, I'll get my numbers, yeah, numbers are my strong suit, that's why I'm wearing the camera, I mean, let me take a deep breath there. But uh it's a three and a half minute walk, um and I don't think that that's really a burden. I I fully understand the importance of parks, um uh to people that may be going for recovery, but having to walk three and a half minutes to a park doesn't. Preclude them from enjoying this, um I think the balance here is, um, I think the important thing. Is that the proposed code from staff doesn't prohibit, these distances are just trigger the need for a slot. They don't prohibit another facility from going in, if 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 it's strictly prohibited, saying you can only have one in this thing. I would feel completely different about this, but I think the fact that all we're doing is is triggering a slump. I think what that does do is give the the city and the leadership the opportunity. To review each situation and its unique characteristics, the operator, the the uh the neighborhood and all of those things. And and hopefully make the decision that best suits the community at that time, at that point in time. Um so, uh this is just my opinion, but I I believe the, the original recommendation of. Of staff was was pretty on point, um maybe the distance, uh again, I'm going numbers here, so. Let me slow down and do this, put my glasses on maybe and read this a little slower, um, the seventy five hundred feet is. One point four miles, one point four two miles, maybe just go with the standard fifty two eighty, which it it was a huge jump from. Almost a mile and a half to a half mile, maybe being somewhere in the middle is a is a more happy balance. Uh you know, one mile radius or fifty two eighty feet, uh but I, you know, the exact distance isn't important, but I do think. the fact that it's a slump and not a prohibition is the difference to me. I think having an extra the ability of the council to to review each situation as it comes up is important to ensure we're getting the right thing in that moment in time for the community. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Paul. My questions are typically procedural. Were there any other neighboring city areas to review against this?
Yeah, we reviewed the neighboring municipalities, the typical ones, like, think of Brooklyn, Champaign, Sandy Springs. DeKalb, Alpharetta. The challenge with this is that state or the federal law has been changing on this, and most of these ordinances in place predate those changes. So we have many cities surrounding us that don't prohibit these at all, that don't allow these at all, or that allow only in the less desirable commercial district and manufacturing districts as the as the as the leftover districts, so to say. What we've also done is we looked at places throughout the country that have done current regulations on this, that have done recent regulations of these changes. And we use some of those as a basis, also like those in Florida communities and Ohio communities and so forth.
To get to Tom's point, was your, did you consider making it special use in all situations? All residential and commercial center?
So we started out with sort of comparing the same to same to sort of community residences, look at what the what the personal care homes, how they are regulated. And then for the recovery communities, see how nursing homes are regulated. And then use that as a basis. But, yeah, we've looked at the different the different types of, you know, special use, special use and so forth as part of this.
Okay, so this is in keeping with making all one type of class than the idea when the permit, when a specialty is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Oh, they can't hear you and staff. We may need a new battery, Jay.
Thank you for the presentation. We are all talking about the same issue, but in reality, we're not. There are two things that we're really talking about today, and that is recovery communities, which are also very different from the community residences, very different. We can't lump them together. These regulations were thought of and sort of in unison, lumped together with some of the same regulations for each. And I have I have very little concern about the community residences. I have grave concerns over the other, recovery, recovery community, grave concerns. The amount of work we're haggling over, how many people can be in the community residence? But yet, oh, how many people are allowed to be in a community recovery, the recovery community?
Yes, no, there's no cap.
No cap, no cap whatsoever, but yet there are between five, six, and seven. We have slump regulations in some permitted by permit and other zoning's across the city, inconsistencies across the board. We have residences, single-family residences directly next door to some of these properties, and there's issues on some that aren't in others. Grave concerns over the recovery community. The planning commission, respect what they did, but I disagree to a certain extent with the numbers. Tom mentioned the why did they go from 7,000 to 2640? I agree with the 5280. Looking at section 27, 146, I think that the numbers in 81 need to be converted from 2640 to 5280, one mile distance, just for the community recovery communities. I have grave concerns over them. And I think that, you know, the planning commission made a change, and they went a little too far, I'd like to revert that back. Same with number, same thing under the recovery communities in section two. They got it, there's 1,000 feet from the nearest school. For the recovery communities, I'd like that up to 2,000. We'd all go then for a slump, we would then come to city council from that perspective. It's not, oh, I correct me if I'm wrong. We have to come for a slump. So that was what I, if I'm looking at these regulations, those are the changes I would immediately like to see. I'd like to see consistency on some of these other, I was looking, you have this is gonna be permitted by right in one section, but then a convent or monastery has to go through a slump. You know, I mean, it's in our regulations, a little inconsistency in some things. So that's where I'm at. I'm looking at grave concerns of the recovery communities.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate you asking about the examples. I always ask that as well, would have happened before. Potentially, if you do bring it back, I'd like to hear a little bit more about in Georgia that's established, I know the state or local law may change. Could you just slow us a little bit about the process? It's been going on for quite some time. Did you do this all in-house, or did you bring in any consultants? You definitely spent a lot of time, and I commend the staff effort, but I'm just curious on you've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours, I mean, if you just mentioned the staff time on this.
Yeah, maybe I could commend the planning commission as well, because the planning commission has seen it three times at this point, and they worked on this pretty intensely too. We had an outside attorney that we were working with from a legal standpoint, but we otherwise worked in the same house.
That leads my second question. Has currently proposed, it's been vetted by our in-house legal counsel? Okay, thank you for that. I'd like to talk about once, let's say, as is, this is currently in place, and something's approved. You mentioned they're looking at what, how they're operating and operation review. Is that in there where we go in periodically? Are we able, once this slump is in place, are we able to, are we saying that we're gonna go in there periodically to look at and ask them to provide their accreditations and their certifications and their permitting and so on? And what's the hook in there? When we look at, do we have an additional oversight once a slump is issued in this action, that this activity stays in place?
And we're not experts in any of these, you know, we're not experts on reviewing like drug addiction type treatment, but not experts at reviewing mental health treatment. The state license, the majority of these places, the facilities that we have are licensed by the state. And they undergo periodic inspections of those criteria. We would not do any annual inspections. We would do a complaint-driven enforcement. So if we get notice that anything has arrived, we would certainly look at this. But we're not proposing any annual inspections.
Right, I'm not saying for inspection, but to say, are we making sure they're maintaining their accreditation? That they're maintaining their license? Do we have a hook into that?
Paul, you'll be able to jump in, say. Well, first of all, I want to be careful about what we do and don't do, but what I would say is this, whole purpose behind closing the slump, but it's so that
Gotta hold it closer, I'm sorry.
So that the city council can review these matters, just like with any other business. I mean, we don't go in people's home to see what they're doing. We don't go in Chili's or Steakhouse and see what they're doing, unless they don't have a business permit. There's a health inspection for some reason, or a state entity, or there's some complaint. So I want to make sure we treat these entities no differently than we would any other business, other than the methodology by which they locate to get that business permit, they go through the process, that we're trying to close the loop on it. But no, we don't do any extraordinary until there's a complaint. And there's very limited what government can do. I think somebody said earlier, when the neighbors got the grass next door, you know, he gets the guy's grass, so we want to be careful about trying to distinguish them in any way other than this is a business, this type of business, this is how it goes in, this is the review process. As far as the regulation, it can be no more or no worse than anybody else. But I will say, Paul was right, the state does play probably a more heavy hand. Y'all's hand can come in if you receive complaints, depending upon what the nature of the complaints, they would look at, but there's whether it's what we can do.
And so just a quick loging, I appreciate the counsel heading in discussing that not lumping them together. I do appreciate that difference and the nuances between a community resident and a recovery community, so I appreciate that. The differentiation there. I also would also look at outcomes if we raise the limit on community resident to seven versus five, if that's fine of an impact. And I'd like to look at that quarter-mile distance potential on the community distance, a resident just to add that over in the conversation. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, just so I can make sure that I'm understanding everything correctly. A recovery community is not allowed in single-family residential?
That's correct.
No slump, no nothing, no how, no way?
Correct.
Great, thank you. And I understand concerns about the schools, but all of our schools are in single-family residential. So there's that. I also want to make sure I understand that in order to have a community residence in single-family residential, you absolutely have to have a slump.
That is correct.
And in that slump, they can ask at the same time to go up to seven, be close to a park, be close to school, be closer to wherever. It's not five different slumps, it's one slump with whatever they need to open that community residence.
Correct, that multiple slumps would be required as one process, multiple criteria.
Okay. One thing that I, you said to me when we met earlier today, to answer my other million questions, where you know, a half mile means that people are not experiencing two of these homes in their daily lives. So I think that's to me a very that's what we're trying to get, right? We're trying not to have clusters. And a half mile apart means that people are not experiencing two in their daily lives, which I think is kind of harmful. So to me, because also these if they're close to a park, it's not just rehab places, it's also group homes for elderly or whoever. And I honestly think that we should open our parks to them. So I am a proponent of what the planning commission did in removing the thousand-foot area to the park, because they're wanting to go, like, that's just where I am. And this is just something I probably know the answer to, but I can never remember. When we say a thousand-foot schools, do we take into account private schools?
So we have specifics of yes, but they have to be, they have to be either primary or secondary school type facilities, so it would not include daycare facilities.
So what about kindergarten?
So it's state law specific about it, so it's anything that follows like a that follows a curriculum that falls under the requirements, which is the kindergarten, but I'm not prepared, I don't know exactly, but I think kindergarten is included at daycare or pre-teenage classes.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to make carefully make a couple of points. One is that we're doing this to what you said on that very first slide, which was to address holes. I'm gonna read it exactly how it says. Has a gap that leaves us vulnerable. We want to meet both the needs of our residents and the needs of people who are vulnerable and in need. The purpose of lumping them together is that the bigger providers of services cannot be in single-family homes. That they are not allowed in single-family neighborhoods, it's prohibited. And the smaller product is allowed in neighborhoods. And I think we need to avoid clustering with both cases. And I think we need, so John looks confused, I'm gonna read it. Community residence is a special-use land permanent, single-dwelling residential recovery communities are not permitted. Right, so clustering is a concern, I will add. And maybe it makes us, we're not as unique as we were seven years ago in 18, when we didn't have good ambulance response times. But this is a big deal, mental health and addiction-related illnesses are challenging for our first responders. And I feel like we have a particular, I mean, we've had to hire our own ambulance to meet the needs that we already have, and remain very concerned about what's happening there. And I think you know what to bring back to us as questions next time, which is the distances. That was the big one. That's the big one, to bring back for us to talk about whenever you bring this back as a secondary. Anybody have any further questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you, Paul. I think Sharon needs to read. We're doing the consent agenda. All right, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? I think I missed one too. Yes. All in favor, say aye. That passage unanimously, thank you, Sharon. And then now Sharon needs, and I think to bring, can I get to this one?
Sure.
Okay, this is, is the American Rescue Plan timeline extension of grants, Jay Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be a very short agenda item, hopefully. About two years ago, you started allocating some of the American Rescue Plan funding towards grants to not-for-profits in the area to provide direct services to residents. That $2 million has almost been fully allotted. Last November, we actually went through and extending all the contracts to June 30. That was our goal, to have all money was spent. Unfortunately, we did not get to that. The agencies are making their very best attempt to, this is a little bit of a cumbersome process, because we do audit them during this. Just to kind of show a little bit. Here's a list of the 19 agencies. Some of them are duplicated here because they received it or received it through a secondary agency. Out of these, there are five of them that still have about a quarter million dollars left to be allocated. We're also doing auditing work for some of the others. We have a member, Dawn, on the finance staff, who's going through invoice by invoice, looking at it. True amount of accountability with it, and I'm proud of what finance has been doing with that. We'd like to make sure that we close these out properly, so what I ask for to mandate is a blanket authority to extend all the contracts until December 31 of this year. And they will all be closed out before December 31. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any further questions? It's an action item.
Move to approve.
Any further discussions or questions? And just keep us updated. Oh, I think we did vote. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Great. And I'll just read the next one too, because it's a discussion item. Award on a contracted KCI Technologies to Provide Preliminary Design, Shandong Village Cross Road Project.
I don't use, I know he's, I'm trying to figure out how I page down.
Uh, somebody can be able to shoot.
I'm just watching. I'm there, Charles.
Uh, you need to use the microphone.
I'm gonna try to coordinate and scroll at the same time.
And not to make it harder, but you can put the microphone close to you.
Okay. How's this?
That's good.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Man, Council. I'm Michelle Rose, the Deputy Public Works Director. I'm here to present the design contract for the Shandley Dunn Road from Womack to Roberts, otherwise known as the Village Crossroads. Okay, so this project was first identified in the twenty eleven Dunn Road Village Master Plan. Uh, and the Dunn Road Village Master Plan, uh, it was um awarded a contract in April of twenty seventeen. Um, for a concept design and the preferred concept intended was presented to council in March of twenty two. That concept was approved by GDOT in October of twenty three. So when GDOT approves the concept report in October, uh, they reprogrammed the project with a new project number. This required the city to uh re-prepare a new consultant under this new project number. The project was advertised in January uh of last year or this year. And they rose qualified consultant when selected as KCI Technologies. Uh, this is a request from awarded sign contract for permanent engineering to KCI. So this is the project layout. Uh, this is the preferred concept that is consistent with what was presented to council in March of twenty two. Uh, the project will be shot by the Deskmade Facilities from Ashford Center Parkway to Roberts Drive. Uh, we are not changing the number of lanes um through um the three lanes along the corridor. But we are incorporating interception improvements um at Shandley Dunn Road and Mount Vernon um. Road, the opening and dual left turn lanes, uh, as we head northbound to head westbound onto Mount Vernon. And we are adding, constructing a single lane around about at the intersection of Roberts Drive. Uh, this project is is a lot like Gateway and that will take about four to five years to complete the design. Uh, the construction is anticipated to start in twenty twenty nine. Uh, this four to five year four to five year duration is mostly due to the federal process. Um, that is a lengthy process that requires review times. It has a complex right of way process and uh this corridor is pretty congested with utilities that require some complex work. Uh, one thing we did do in the concept report was that we broke the construction cost out by phases. Uh, that was due to um increase in construction costs and uh complexity of the project on the north end with the roundabout. Um, we anticipate breaking the project into two separate construction phases. One will be from Ashford Center Parkway to Dunn Road Village. And then the future phase will be from Dunn Road Village Parkway to Roberts Drive. So this is the proposed typical section. Uh, this is um. A one-way cycle track with sidewalks on each side. Um, and then we'll have lighting along the corridor. We will have landscape buffers, uh, or landscape units and buffers in areas with brighter, wider, brighter way. And uh in the areas where we have newer right away, we'll have um concrete uh units. Uh, and so mainly that's in front of the farmhouse with that newer right way. Uh, we will look at usable opportunities to reduce the project footprint uh when possible. Uh, like reducing lengthways um that support uh safe turning movements, traffic volumes, gate transcraps. So this is a perspective view here. I'm looking northbound on on Shandley Dunn Road at Mount Vernon at the dual left. So this is kind of an idea what the corridor will look like when it's constructed. Okay, so this is the five minutes report and slide. It's about the financials. Uh, so the preliminary engineering design is typically broken into three separate phases. Concept, preliminary engineering, and then final design uh phase. So we've already completed concept. And so now we are going through and uh we're starting with a preliminary design. So this would be, this contract will be for thirty percent design and from the engineering. We do it to three, two additional um phases with a contract, which will be sixty percent preliminary engineering and final design. Uh, so this first uh contract phase will consist of survey, concept validation, thirty percent preliminary plans. And this includes public engagement, environmental resource AD, updated traffic, and utility locations. Uh, so we're doing this at the phase contract so that we can better define the project scope. Uh, as you move into sixty percent plans and final plans, and this is really just to help reduce. Or help control costs by having like no um conditions and impacts from the thirty percent design phase. Uh, so this phase, this fee is seven hundred and ninety seven thousand, one dollar and fifty cents. Plus a five percent design contingency, which equals out to be eight hundred and thirty seven thousand. Uh, we have requested um eight hundred thousand dollars. In the tenth application to cover the whole preliminary engineering um design phase. We are optimistic that we will get um the additional ERC funding. And the initial awards will be announced um next month in August. And so uh if it's not, uh, if we do not receive the award, uh, we plan on using SLOPS to funds. Um, in the FY twenty five budget, um, and then we'll continue to seek um federal funds from other sources. With that, we are recommending the award of a design contract to KCI for thirty percent preliminary engineering and the amount of eighty hundred, those seven thousand dollars. Uh, anyone has any questions?
Need to pick up things that might. Okay, questions? I'm just gonna have to do the same thing. Sorry.
So I I this may be my bad memory. Uh, I'm looking at the perspective view. And I'm noticing that it doesn't show any overhead utilities. And then looking at the construction cost, are we planning to vary utilities with this design? Or I know we had a discussion about this and I just don't. I want to make sure that. That we're not expecting very details if not to be here.
Yeah, we uh that's not included in this budget. There I know there was a discussion on it, but that is just really outside of our current budget.
That's what I thought, uh, but I didn't think of that question until I saw the picture and I realized that they weren't so different. Thank you. Uh, thank you. So just a clarification on on something you said. You said, uh, five years for design. Is it five years until construction?
Yes.
When would we see an initial uh this phase of the thirty percent design uh for review by council?
So this would probably be like a year timeframe. So a part of a a year process to get.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm taking a look at the, uh, you know, we're not really looking at the drawings right now, but I still looking. Um, what have we learned from the Georgetown project? Could be incorporated into this project.
Probably, uh, there's probably a lot of lessons learned, um, that we can get through. We are. Um, really getting into heavy utility coordination, doing um a lot of um what we call subservice utility. Um, coordination to look at where uh might have conflicts. I think that was a big issue in the Georgetown Gateway Project. Um, and then there will be, um, you know, a heavy review process. Uh, so there's a lot of lessons there.
Lessons that I've learned from Georgetown is that we need to look a little closer into the ingress, ingre- egress of various properties. There's no properties in Georgetown that I can't get to depending on what direction they're in. So I think that's a mistake. So I think I was going through the map at a hundred and fifty percent scrolling to the right, trying to figure out and making sure that it's all there. The next thing is, is that. Trucks still have to access these properties. And we are narrowing these lanes to the point where the turn ratios don't work for trucks. That's something I've noticed. And I'm not sure these plans take that into consideration.
That will be part of the analysis. I mean, I think that was what I was talking about when we would look at. Ways to narrow the footprint, uh, but you know, knowing that we would still need to make sure that we're accommodating turn movements. Traffic volumes, transit routes, uh, those things to make sure that state movements that are allowed to happen.
And I remember when this first came up that you were. I wanted to make sure that we did not harm traffic, that we were actually improving. If there were traffic improvements to be made, that we made them. Is there anything here that you can show me that's a traffic improvement?
For, I mean, operationally, for the vehicle, I think the dual lefts make an improvement and the roundabout is an improvement also. Okay, this is generally the pedestrian bike.
I understand that everybody is telling us from the Georgetown perspective that we might have missed a few things. So I'm just trying to compare. Big city projects, next big city project, to make sure we don't make the same mistakes.
Thanks, Michelle. Um. I like it when citizens actually are aware of a new project because they're changing their driving behavior. I like it when people are paying attention when slowing down or watching around the building environment. So I know there's a little bit of growing pains. But you notice when you see cars that have a curb and there's a tire mark on that curb. You know, you hope that's not a a five-year-old child walking there, you know? Uh, let me go to my questions, comments. So, um. I agree that we need to re-intruder city streets so that, um, you know, motorists will naturally stop for pedestrians when they approach the cross city. So ask the engineers how they can make that so that when somebody looks and they see somebody standing there, that they will naturally wait for them like a good person will let them walk across. I know that's a backwards box, but I love to see that. We know that the outcome of this project is going to remain in their neck for the next fifteen years or more. Some of us may not even be on a council when this is built still, right? So, so, you know, I mean, th- this is going to be a long-term project. It's going to be a high impact uh in many regards. High uh construction, but once it's done, wow, but yeah, it's really tight and it's super, yeah. Um. I appreciate that you mentioned the word, well, the two phases. And maybe three. I I'm just saying, let me just, I obviously goes off. We get down to their funding and everything, all the other things that layer into when you can do it and what's makes sense for it. From somebody that runs the numbers, but if you, what what about like a uh Ashford Center Parkway to Mount Vernon? One part. And then maybe from Melbourne up to Dunn Road Village Parkways. And then the Parkway out to one. Or maybe can you just do the roundabout by itself quickly, whatever? Maybe that would be an operational improvement right there without having to do the whole darn thing. And and then, and then you, you know. You know, what's the longer list of things we could do instead of saying, okay, we gotta do this whole thing and we're gonna break it down into two and we'll see it all done in a decade? I, and. Uh. Three phases or is it two or one? Um. I definitely, this is going to be a financial challenge to look at the funding mechanisms. And I've talked to you about other public works projects about. How we can um match the cash flow to each phase. That's up to us. Would you guys come back with us to a budget? It's up to us to match. Um, and I know that when we do SPOS, it's a payable model and we sit there in the bank. But if we get to a point, you know, it's, we're saying, hey, we are ready to go. All we need is three more years of SPOS funding and we already have it allocated. Come to council, right, to see what we, what options we may have to 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 get that happening sooner or later. Um, you mentioned the second ARF fat grant result request. That's only just for the design?
No, we did request um right way and construction dollars also.
I remember that, yeah. Okay, thanks. And then the funding on this design though, you said from SPOS twenty twenty five budget. So if I go back to the presentation, you've got a, um. Preliminary engineering, one point five million dollars is what I'm looking at in the slide. Maybe you go back a slide or two. I just want to run the numbers, make sure. If it's this one, yeah. So the current city funding, is that currently already budgeted in SPOS?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and then you already said you're getting two fifty. Okay, right?
Yes. That's we currently have that in federal.
Sure. And the difference, I'm assuming the difference is eight hundred thousand, but my math is wrong. Is that the apply for federal?
It would be a five for additional eight hundred thousand federal fines for the preliminary, for the tip fund, tip application.
Right, but that, what we're asking for today is just the the current city funding and current federal funding. That's four fifty and two fifty K. That's. Management, what we're asking for?
Yes, it's a little over seven hundred.
Right. Okay, so that's just with this current pulse, right? So what is the extra eight hundred K? Remind me, you spoke kind of quickly.
So, uh. Yes, the eight hundred thousand will cover the rest of the design uh for the project. So this is only going to get us up to the first thirty percent. Of the project. And then we still need to go through the rest of preliminary engineering. And then final placement. So that eight hundred thousand will cover the rest of the design.
And you're saying if we don't get that, then we're gonna have to target SPOS?
Yes, or some other federal.
Or something, some other ones. And is that that will be a proposal in a twenty twenty five budget that is currently not in our SPOS two budget?
Yeah, yes, we went to uh work with my units and get.
This would be a new SPOS funding request. Eight hundred K, that's for twenty twenty five. Okay, thanks. Um, appreciate you just restating. You know, we we don't usually get to see the RFPs or RQs. I appreciate you actually adding that as a link in the staff memo. Thank you. Um, we have this concept, but then the RFP, our queue happens and then we don't see it till now. So I do appreciate that. Um. How many, I I'd like to, I asked this before, two years ago. I'll ask this again. I'd like to eliminate some curb cuts for safety. You know, and 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 go into, okay, are we, are we, when we get to that point, don't sit and wait to say, uh, negotiation. There's, there's, you know, there's impressions that happen on Shandley Dunn Road, you know? I won't name specific. I know them, but I won't name them. But it's like, are we entertaining eliminating any curbs at all in this to make it a safer redesign? So people are flowing better and and because you've got people turning left and right out of things and there's no way to turn and. They don't have line of sight. Um, it's just a lot of action going on in that small corridor.
So we will have certain, we'll have a median put in certain areas along with the corridor. Um, so that will uh help control access. Um, eliminating curb cuts, I don't, I I don't believe that that is part of the current project, but it's something that we can look into seeing if it's feasible or not.
Well, I'm just one of seven. I asked two years ago to remove some curb cuts and I'll just ask every time this is brought up. Um, and then that that corner in front of Chevron is crazy, that one in front of the shops in Bellwood. You're talking about realigning that and making that just, we need all that up. That where that light is.
Uh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, um. We're not gonna bury utilities. I had it on there. I mean, if you guys ask these guys, just throw a swag out there, what would be a partial segment? What's a rough order magnitude to run on burying utilities, just say between Mount Vernon and the Village Parkway? If you could just come back to us and say, what is it, a rough estimate within several hundred thousand dollars? And so just so we have an idea, just so we say, well, you know what? I'm just leaving it out here, right? Um, I'd also like to see some raised intersections, you know, in front of the shops at Dunn Road, at the Village Parkway crossing, there's raised intersections. Um, we see them in Decatur, they do raised intersections, um, they're doing some other places, just columns, traffic cones, so. Um, yeah, so anyway, that was a little low, but anyway, I appreciate it's gonna be around. See you, see you next decade.
I just want to make sure that I understand the deliverable for this eight hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to get a engineered or preliminary engineered plan according to the concept that we approved. And what, yes?
Yes, and we'll have concept validation as part of this. So it's just validating the concept is still applicable. And then we'll get survey, updated traffic, environmental resource. I used to go out and do surveys of all the environmental. Pieces, um, and then utility locations uh and public engagements.
Okay, so then, once it comes back to us, are we looking at a detailed engineering plan or what what's going to come back to us where that we're looking at?
So we'll, we will have thirty percent plan. So you'll have a a a plan to to see like a plan sheet that we can see at that point, yes.
With measurements and language and la, 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 la.
Okay, um, I want to circle back to something John said and I want Eric to clarify. So I happen to think that the Georgetown project went wrong a lot of different ways. Um, some related to utilities, a lot, some related to, I don't even know, but I think it had a. Negative impact on businesses and this is a very important commercial border. And Eric, you assured me that there was going to be not just lessons learned on paper, that there was going to be what?
I think we're gonna do a deep dive on that project.
I think we're going to do a deep dive on that project when it's open bid, when it's finalized, which is coming up. And everyone will go through that. And if there, if you have any specific questions on the construction, you know, one of the main things, of course, was utility relocations. There are certain things we don't have control over on those. Um I do have David Ayers, if y'all have any specific questions, he's here, if you'd like to ask anything. But as far as they were called project, I did meet with the the public work staff this afternoon. Uh which is the public works folks are here plus Todd and Ed, who do a deep dive.
So, so from a public perspective, and I don't know if this is part of the deliberable with this, is it when? Because as I think I understood it, and I might be confused, we're doing a third of the engineering with this, is that correct? Or is this the engineering for the whole plant, is it?
This is the current license, like the the rough grant.
The rough draft for the whole project or a whole, sorry, the whole segment?
The whole segment.
A whole corridor?
The whole quarter, so, yes.
And then we're gonna build it in thirds?
Yes.
Okay, before we come forward with the plan to start construction, we need a plan. That addresses all the little things that I think a deep dive may show. And also how we're going to protect and serve the business community as we start construction. Um we just need a plan. We need to be able to tell the community, this is what we're going to do differently. And these projects are always impactful, but I just feel like Georgetown dragged along and along. And therefore the impacts drag along and along and along. So, um really, so many people are incredibly pleased with the Georgetown project. They love the way it looks. They live in the area and they're very happy, but they are pretty bitter about the whole thing that what happened getting there. So just something to keep in mind as we go to a also densely commercial area. Anybody else? All right, we will see this again in the, whenever you put it back on, because this is a discussion item.
Yes.
All right, we have executive session, Eric, for what? Oh, no, public comments. But if anybody has public comments, no public left, uh city manager comments?
Yes, we do an executive session for legal and the real estate.
Okay, and then council comments. Anybody?
I just want to thank, again, I thank you in writing the Blitz Department for their outstanding work at the parade. And for the city council for writing their bikes. It was highly entertaining to people to watch. And and actually got lots of really positive feedback from people. A lot that came to me and said, it was, it was Stacy's idea. She didn't disclose, yeah, she didn't disclose that she had an E-bike. Right, you couldn't, that's true, you could use it if you would have asked everybody. But I got lots of really good feedback from people that were at the parade. Um watching, um on y'all on the bikes. And then again, thanks to everybody that made this ready possible. Uh and with that, I need a motion for exempt and intensive for legal and the state.
Move for executive session for purposes of anyone who listens.
Second, moved by Rob, seconded by Catherine, all in favor, say hi. You're next. We'll be back.
We're gonna wake up. We don't need to cheat for time.
We just go up and turn it off.
Oh, we're on camera here.
Go upstairs.
Because we can do it here.
Yep. I don't need anyone's laptop. I'm ready.
You got a microphone? I don't.
I moved to adjourn. Second. Thank you.
Favorite. Favorite. Four.
Yeah, we're late. We're done. We got four. A member's coming in.
And five. I actually learned something at GMA this year, my meetings class. There's a lot of Robert's rules stuff.
I went to open meetings.
By Robert's rules, you don't have to vote to adjourn the meeting. If you've completed the agenda, you can just American.
Who wants to be down?
Yeah, so we don't have to go through all that. We can just yeah, if you completed the agenda, you can just adjourn the meeting without a vote.
Sure.
A lot of classes.
Well, there's also, there's also times that we come, it's only happened once.
Yeah, we vote.
Where we add something at the last minute and vote on something.
Yeah, that happens.
I mean, it's, it's happened one or two times in your, in 15 years.
Yeah, we'll come back for real.
Well, it's any time we're doing a transaction.
Yeah. We've done that.
We've done it a few times.
We come out of executive session.
Yeah, we already voted anyway. We already adjourned.
We are.